I'm the acting moderator. I'm in control.
So you're gonna read this?
I'll read the opening and the closing.
Okay, and you're gonna do the pledge allegiance? Okay, and then I guess then they know. Okay, I mean, what is it?
The opening and closing.
Okay.
I'll read the area. I read that and I read on the back end.
Thank you very much. I can read this.
Didn't forget your glasses or nothing?
Uh, contacts.
Okay.
Hopefully they stay in. Geez, I didn't even wear any earrings, Bill. What did you say? I'm not a Boy Scout. I think you should be happy I'm not. I remember this day. They weren't the best of my life. No, it's usually just when I talk I laugh.
You good enough for me to call a recess?
I sure am. Yeah, just give me, give me one sec, one second and I'll give you the.
Go ahead. Yep, and then we'll just recess until. I'm gonna call ours.
For September 14th, we'll call the order at 6:57 PM. I move the select board to recess until shortly following the special town meeting this evening. Who's there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We will resume after a short recess following the STM and we will be broadcasting the STM shortly.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for turning out. I'm not the normal face you see here, but Rich is away and so as town clerk, I have to open the meeting and then go through the particulars of that and then we will nominate and elect a moderator for the rest of the meeting. So with all of that in mind, I will call this meeting to order. Give me a clock here somewhere. Sorry, I don't have time.
7:01.
7:01. Thank you. And I would announce that we have a quorum, so that's good and even more now. That's excellent. And so what I would need to do now is I will read the call and the officer's return on the warrant. Commonwealth of Massachusetts Franklin SS, Town of Irving constables, Town Clerk and Administrative Assistant. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants qualified to vote in town affairs to meet on the grounds of the Irving Senior and Community Center located at One Care Drive, Irving, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, September 14, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Qualified inhabitants will meet then and there to vote on the following articles in the warrant and the articles are listed there for you numbered one through five. In addition, you are hereby directed to serve the above warrant and to post attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk for the day of said meeting, given under our hands this 29th day of August 2022 and it is signed by the Irving Select Board. Then Franklin SS, Town of Irving, I have served the above warrant by posting up attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before time of holding said meeting and it's dated 8/31 and signed by an Irving Constable. So with that little bit, we officially have opened the meeting and I would invite everyone to join me in standing in a pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So with that bit of business out of the way, I would like to now open up nominations for a temporary moderator to continue the meeting tonight. Any nominations?
I will nominate Linda Downs-Bembry.
Second.
The nominated and seconded for Linda Downs-Bembry. Motion to close nominations?
Make motion to close nomination.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Did I hear one?
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor of closing the nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. And so we have before us the nomination of Linda Downs-Bembry. So all in favor of Linda being the temporary moderator signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. It's unanimous and I do now turn the meeting over to you, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me while I get this suited up. Thank you. I haven't been up in front of a podium for a while, but we're gonna start with the counts payable of a prior year, fiscal year 2022, Article 1, appropriation for FY 2022 expenses. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,173.39 for the purpose of paying fiscal year 2022 invoices from the limited line items as listed below or take any other action relative thereto. And below you see the six lines with the items.
Make vote.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I was just gonna say and below that, there's also an explanation of the why and what they are.
I make a motion to accept Article 1 as printed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion, any questions in this? I see none. All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you.
So you declare it passed unanimously first?
I declare that it's passed unanimously. The next item is on capital improvement projects, Article number two, to appropriate for public works a wheel loader. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $60,000 and no cents for purchase and/or lease of a wheel loader with accessories and related expenses by transferring $20,000 and no cents from the Highway Ford F-550 Truck Special Article and by transferring $40,000 and no cents from the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relative thereto. And below there is an explanation about it, but if someone would like.
Need your article moved in second to first.
I'm sorry.
I make a motion to accept Article 2 as printed.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, some questions on it? I see our highway superintendent. He's waving.
Do you have any questions?
There being no questions, I would move the vote. Ready to move? All right, let's move the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you very much.
Declare it.
I declare it's unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Article 3, to appropriate for elementary school walk-in freezer slash refrigerator. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $22,000 and no cents by transferring from the Capital Stabilization Fund into Special Article Fund 01-301-914-57800. Walk-in freezer slash refrigerator upgrade or replace or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the school committee and it has been recommended.
Make a, make a motion to accept Article 3 as printed.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, you got it easy.
Don't do this on my account. There being no questions or discussion, I'd like to move the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I declare it's unanimous. Article 4, under FY 2023 appropriation for Franklin County Technical School. Article 4 is an amend FY 2023 Franklin County Technical School funding to see if the town will vote to amend Article 9 of the annual town meeting warrant held on May 11, 2022, that raised and appropriated the sum of $530,875.00 for secondary education and expenses at the Franklin County Tech School, Technical School for fiscal year 2023 by changing the beginning date to July 1, 2022 or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the select board.
Make a motion to accept Article 4 as printed.
Second.
Is there any discussion, any questions in regard to what this article does? There is an explanation also found there. I see no questions, so I would like to move the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Again, another unanimous vote in this town. Multi-year contract authorizations, Article 5, authorization to sign four-year contract for a wheel loader. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a four-year contract with a qualified vendor for the lease and/or purchase of a wheel loader equipment for the town, subject to the select board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town and subject annually to town meeting approval for funding for these services or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the select board and approved by Capital Planning and Finance Committee.
Make a motion to accept Article 5 as printed.
Second.
Do we have any questions on this? We do not. I would like to move the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I declare that also a unanimous vote. I thank you very much.
I make a motion to kill the.
Dissolve.
Dissolve. Make a motion to dissolve the special time meeting.
Second.
All, is there any discussion about dissolving the meeting or would anyone like to, to talk about anything else? Since everyone would like to move on, let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I, it's a unanimous vote.
We are officially done.
We are officially.
Thank you, Linda.
Dissolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. We live or not? Okay, is my mic hot? Now that the special town meeting has concluded, we will break for three minutes and we'll resume at 7:15 with the select board meeting. If anyone would like to stay for that, you're all welcome to. Thank you for ensuring we had a quorum tonight and enjoy your evening if you leave. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry?
What did she say?
I don't know. I didn't catch it. I think that's a good thing. You did good. You did good. I would have stumbled over it a lot worse.
I didn't text you because he told me this, this was happening the other day. And I assumed, especially because, you know, someone you're pretty close to sits up that, that you knew.
Someone, how did I get wrong in this? I've been wrong here. Who decided that? Welcome back. We will resume the select board meeting at 7:19 PM. Our next item of business is discussion regarding town response to COVID-19. We have our latest numbers and newsletter on that. Any discussion, questions, concerns?
No concerns.
No concerns.
Just to make you all aware and we'll get it out to the community, there should be a series of booster clinics coming up and we'll make sure that we get that out to you all in the community.
Excellent. Our next topic was review of the STM warrant, but obviously that has completed. We. Are we moving on the wheel loader? We are not moving on the wheel loader yet. We'll be finishing up that paperwork. That was just approved, correct?
That was just approved.
Yeah, so we'll get that probably at the next meeting.
Yep, we'll get everything on record with the town clerk's office, get everything ready to go and we'll bring that to you next meeting.
Okay. Meeting minutes, August 15, 2022?
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of August 15, 2022 as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will come back to the budget calendar during the joint meeting shortly. This brings us to our FY 23 road salt procurement. Lieutenant McCrory, would you join us? So this is our FY 23 salt procurement.
So much nice conversation we had to talk about winter time, right?
Yep. It's coming sooner than we'd like, I'm sure.
Yes. So the last couple of years, we've been using the pre-treated salt. Last year, the vendor ran out of it. So this year, I'd like to split our orders between the pre-treated salt and some regular salt and then mix it in-house. Doesn't seem to be a supply issue with regular road salt as much as it was for the pre-treated salt last year. So because of the V H, VEH 107 contract, it's specific to each vendor for what's out there to bid in our region. I was hoping to use the same vendor for both products and we can't do that. So it's two different vendors this year. Both vendors we worked with before and didn't have a problem with either one of them. Price increased about $26 a ton from last year to this year. So we estimated about 350 ton used last year. So I think we're pretty safe in that, safe in that area again this year.
And the pre-treat is the newer stuff we've been using for a few years now?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, so we used regular road salt last year when, when the vendor ran out of it. There is certainly a difference in activity in it in different temperatures versus the, you know, the regular street salt, road salt versus the, the pre-treated stuff. So I think they both have their benefits. That's why we're gonna mix them, mix them together in-house and get the best of both worlds out of it. So I guess I'm asking for approval of 200 ton of straight salt from Eastern Salt and 175 tons of treated salt from Morton Salt.
Does this lock us in or can we get additional if we need it against that?
Oh, yes.
Because it's a state contract, so this is just what you're estimating?
Yes, it's just estimated and right now this, this falls just under our budget, probably about $1,800 under our budget.
Right, okay. Questions on that one? Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I see the recommended vote language. I was gonna ask, do you need me to name Morton and Eastern or just the fact that we have the contract?
As you noted, as I noted, the contract specifies the vendor.
It specifies who it is, okay.
So it's up to you. You can amend.
No, I'll keep it very simple. Make a motion to utilize Massachusetts procurement contract VEH 107 for the road salt procurement for FY 23 and further to authorize Glenn McCrory, highway superintendent, to be the signatory on the contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next topic is review of mountain road and cemetery. Butumis? I can, you can help me if that's wrong.
You're good.
Is it close?
Yeah.
Should have gotten pronunciation before that. Patch and curb procurement.
So what this is for is for the mountain road cemetery project that, that the highway department took on this year. This is the final step of it. Drainage is all in, catch basins are all in. It's loamed, it's seeded, grass is coming in good, everything is stabilized. So this is the final tie-in piece that we just, we don't have the equipment for to do it. Since we reached out to three vendors to hopefully get this done hopefully by early October and wrap that part of that project up. So this, we got estimates first and then realized because of the price of it that it had to go out to central register. I would rather just look at the other two and go with the, I think it's, you know, responsive and responsible.
Responsible lowest, yeah.
So that's my thoughts on it.
I agree.
I agree also.
I have the same feeling. It's not clerical in nature, the error, and there is a cost to it, and there's some work behind it, so I tend to agree. Unfortunate, but the mistake is ours, not on the bidders, so I think the bidders who followed our scope are the bidders that are qualifying, so I agree, so I think that that issue is cleared. Then we have two responsible responsive bidders. And, go ahead.
Just as a point of clarification, if the three of you are in agreement, can I at least have a vote on deeming the other one non-responsive?
Yes.
Non-responsive? Is that?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to deem Taylor Davis Landscaping and Construction of Amherst, Mass. non-responsive for their bid on the mountain road and cemetery bituminous, patch and curb project procurement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I gave that the title, so it'd be hard to say.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Brian.
It was easy to type with a lot of corrects, not so easy with words. So that leaves us Johnson Asphalt Paving LLC out of Northfield, Mass. with a bid of $22,315, and a bid from Clayton D. Davenport Trucking Incorporated out of Greenfield, Massachusetts for $28,500. I assume those bids and bidders are responsive and conforming. There's no issues with anything on this?
Nope.
Nope.
So that would leave Johnson Asphalt Paving LLC as the lowest bidder?
Yep.
Any concerns, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the procurement for the construction of the mountain road and cemetery bituminous, patch and curb project to Johnson Asphalt Paving LLC out of Northfield in the amount of $22,315, and to authorize Brian Smith, town administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We're going to work on your titles.
I just wanted one of you to shoot a motion, so I didn't have to say it again. Do we have anything else on here for you tonight, Glenn?
I don't believe so.
I believe that was it. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night. With that, I will call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order at 7:32 PM. So to start our joint discussions, it's around FY24 budget calendar and guidance, which I'm not ready for, but it's time to start the process, so. I think we all have in front of us a proposed calendar. And as has been our pattern, we'll start with capital requests first, and then we'll go into operating budget requests. And same with the review process, usually starts with the capital review, and then the operating budget reviews begin as those are winding down.
Just one change on that.
Yes.
You all, in the last two years, reversed just the capital review to give a little more time for the capital committee to do follow-up and if more information is needed. So I proposed in here that we would move that to the end of January instead of the beginning of December. The Capital Planning Committee will be reviewing all through November and December based on this plan, but the presentation publicly to the Select Board and FINCOM would be January, if that's okay.
Does that make sense to the Capital Planning Committee?
It does.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a real nitpicky.
You can, this is your calendar, so you nitpick all you want.
Can we have something other than 2.4?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I've got glasses on, and I'm still going, what does this say?
I will enlarge it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Your Zoom feature isn't working?
I said it was nitpicky.
So I'm just looking at the February 27th open meeting and the March 13th where we'll have a joint meeting to review the draft and the ATM. There's not a lot of opportunity to review outside of, I would actually entertain flipping those two.
Okay.
And having that joint meeting to review the draft on the 27th and then leave the open meeting for March 13th if there are more things that come about and changes and amendments that are needed prior to finalizing. Because there's not a lot of time after February 27th before we, after the March 13th. There's only the two weeks, and then we have to have it finalized on the 27th.
Okay.
I would even recommend just duplicating that language for both meetings, and we'll just carry it as a plan to have both those meetings earmarked, and if we wrap it up in the first form on the 27th, so be it, but then we're just, they're kind of already planned for that.
Yeah, we have all the presentations, but we don't have a lot of opportunity to work through publicly the dollars and cents of each...
And kind of wrap up meeting, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yep, I'll make that change.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And actually, that's only one meeting to review ATM articles too, so that's pretty tight. I know there's also a fair, there's a lot of holidays falling in that meeting schedule, which is, which makes it a little bit more difficult too, so we may have to find another time or two to meet, to fit in.
I was going to say, we've always, you know, we try and maintain the two-week meeting, but I know the three of us have always met in any off day if needed, so.
I did give you, based on past practice, three meetings in January.
Yep.
If folks are still okay with that.
Yes.
The 6th is available as well, right, if we, of February? That's pretty much the only day in January, February, Monday that is available.
Correct. Okay. Yep, so you could pick that up if you needed it. And similarly, there would be the 6th of March you could pick up if that's something you wanted as well. Those were just off-scheduled days.
Historically, the education budgets are struggle to meet that early February, right?
So in the past, you'd done it the first week of February?
Okay.
So this moves it to the second week. Gives them a little extra time, but if you wanted to adjust that further, we could.
No, I was thinking of proposing we add one more meeting in there for review, because I just feel like we don't have a lot of time once presentations are done for the articles or the budget review, like post-presentation. And knowing we probably shouldn't move education up to February 6th.
Right.
We could start discussions then, but maybe it makes more sense to take the March 6th, I believe you said?
Yep.
And add that in, if that makes sense to everyone, as another, we'll just kind of have maybe three in a row of review, joint reviews, just to kind of
Okay.
Go through and work through that.
So I'm adding March 6th, and I am changing February 27th description to match, so they're all the three. So it's the 27th, the 6th, and then the 13th, all the same description.
All the same, yeah.
Okay.
And maybe we finalize sooner, but at least it gives us more breathing room to work through it.
Yeah, I'll make those changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, so the school may not have theirs finalized. I don't think their budget hearing is until, in March, but they should have, at least have a good grasp on the numbers by mid-Fbruary. But they won't, they won't hold their hearing until mid-March.
Yeah, I think you all have just held the meeting with them, they timed their hearing. Sometimes they have a meeting that night or the day, like the week before, so they try to time it around then. But there's always an understanding if something shifts or changes that they'll follow up with the FINCOM and the Select Board.
Any other thoughts, changes? Do we like the meeting format, the joint reviews, presentations, any? Anything else?
I was just going to ask, I know last year with capital, one of the things that we voiced is we opted to not meet with the department heads. And so then we had, Brian was kind of our liaison, and he would get us information and stuff, and it felt a little disjointed. And so I'm wondering if there's a way, when the department heads are already here, that if capital has questions, they might be able to kind of piggyback onto that meeting and get their questions answered? Or if we just want the department head to come, I'm just trying to think what makes sense for the department head, so they're not coming to meeting after meeting after meeting?
Well, it's not, the dates aren't called out, but November 2nd to December 16th is identified as a period for capital to do that? Maybe, maybe capital wants to kind of set a night or two or three during that time and put it on the calendar of like department heads and going through that. I don't know, historically, based on what we've seen, I don't, and I'm speaking because I'm used to it as the Select Board chair over here, but you're the capital chair, so if, you know, how many nights just as an outset, you think makes sense with department heads?
I think if we set up two nights, and then we can use them as we need them. Not every department will need to come in, and some departments may need to come in more than once. So we can always set up two, we can always go to more if we want to, but just figure two.
Yeah. In the past, you all have used a Wednesday? I don't know if that still works generally?
Yeah.
I'd really like to meet with the department heads anyway, at least once, just to kind of feel them out in terms of what they're, what they, any future items that they might see that they're not putting on paper.
Wouldn't capital meet once to see them all and then meet with the department heads, or would we want to meet and have them presented like the budgets are done?
I think after the budgets are done, because then if we read them and we have specific questions. I mean, do you mean after they fill out their forms, or?
Yeah, I guess I was, what is the first capital meeting? Is it reviewing them, or is it having the department heads present them? Like, and I was, like, operating budget, so operating budget, we may get the document ahead of the meeting, but the first meeting with them is the meeting when we review it and discuss it.
I'd hate to have to call them in twice, you know, to have them come in and talk to us once, and then if we have questions, they have to come back in again. So maybe if we just meet with them the one time where they can kind of give us a thumbnail sketch of what their department may need, may want, and then talk about exactly what they're looking for this year, kind of while it's fresh in everybody's mind, that might be a good way to do it.
I agree. I mean, I kind of like talking with the other members of the committee once I have the capital plan requests and kind of getting their feedback and their views as well as my being able to put mine in before I speak with the department head.
You just made me think of something with it. I think what maybe we could do, if we, capital meets as a group and we go over all the things, the request forms first, maybe for the department head meetings, what we could do is split it into two groups, questions, no questions. And so we can do one night with the department heads where we have no questions, because in theory, that should be a little bit of a faster meeting. They can come in, chat with us, and then go, and then the department heads we do have questions for, we can have them come a separate night where we know that that might go a bit long. That way, someone, you know, if Chief Holst is here and we just want to say, hi, how's it going? And then we have Glenn, and we know Glenn's going to take a while. We don't have Chief Holst just sitting there waiting. Sorry, gentlemen.
We know how it goes.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
I think you're going where I was going to ask, so.
Do we put them on this list? Now it's two pages, or we need some ledger paper, and to be able to read it. And what dates mean what?
Give me mine with magnifying glass.
So if I get the request back from the department heads and the boards and commissions by October 20th, it gives me a few days to assemble them, get them out to the committee. I'm assuming you all want a little time with them, so I didn't anticipate that you would start reviewing until November.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So I don't, based on the discussion that you all just had, it sounds like you want at least one meeting amongst just the capital planning committee members to collect your thoughts, and then we would be having at least two dates reserved for you to meet with department heads?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
From the 9th, maybe, or do you want, like, gives us a little time to review them before?
Should they get turned in on the 20th?
But they'll come to us.
And by the time Brian...
Probably by the end of the week.
So you get them on the 20th. So you're saying you can have them out to us by like the 27th?
Yeah.
Okay. So technically, so does capital want to meet on the 2nd, on November 2nd, and that can be our first run-through?
That's fine with me.
True. We could do that.
And then do we want to just kind of plan maybe on the 9th and the 16th for our department head meetings? Would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Because we can decide on the 2nd who's easy and who's not.
Pardon me, you have a planning board meeting on the 2nd?
I do, and that is not one I can skip, unfortunately.
Could we start on the 9th?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, well, except we're not going to do the 23rd then. I don't think that would be fine.
So we do 9th, 16th with department heads, and then that gives us some time to, for them to do work and get answers and come back if that's... Because I have a feeling like the first one's going to be what, presentation and a little active Q&amp;A dialogue for those that we have questions with? And then the second one is probably kind of the responses and going through them, so that gives them a few weeks to get that for us.
Oh, yeah. We could do like the 9th and the 16th, and then maybe the 7th?
Of December?
Yeah.
I was going to say the 30th, but I don't know where Thanksgiving falls now. Is that 24th?
20, we know that.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
You remember what tomorrow is.
Do we really want to meet on Pearl Harbor Day?
What?
December 7th, right?
Do you want to do 9/16 and 30? November 30th?
9/16 and 30. That's okay to play.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a fair assessment.
Somewhat accurate.
A meeting where we, you know, look at the requests and say...
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did... Do I recall, we also wanted maybe to have a little more discussion with them during that about what their longer, like the five-year, the longer plan, and get a little more clarity around that, too?
Yeah, I think so.
And anything in prior years that didn't get done and isn't... Where does it belong, right?
Yeah.
I think that was it.
Yeah.
So... Go ahead.
I think you're going where I was going to ask, so...
Do we put them on this list? Now it's two pages, or we need some ledger paper. And to be able to read it. And what dates mean what?
Give me mine with magnifying glass.
So if I get the requests back from the department heads and the boards and commissions by October 20th, it gives me a few days to assemble them, get them out to the committee. I'm assuming you all want a little time with them. So I didn't anticipate that you would start reviewing until November.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So I don't... Based on the discussion that you all just had, it sounds like you want at least one meeting amongst just the capital planning committee members to collect your thoughts. And then we would be having at least two dates reserved for you to meet with department heads?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
From the 9th, maybe? Or do you want to... Does this a little time to review them before?
Should they get turned in on the 20th?
But they'll come to us?
And by the time...
Probably by the end of the week.
So you get them on the 20th. So you're saying you can have them out to us by like the 27th?
Yeah.
Okay. So technic, so does Capital want to meet on the 2nd, on November 2nd? And that can be our first run-through?
That's fine with me.
True.
Yeah.
We could do that.
And then do we want to just kind of plan maybe on the 9th and the 16th for our department head meetings?
Yep.
Would that work?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can decide on the 2nd. Who's easy and who's not.
Pardon me? You have a planning board meeting on the 2nd?
I do, and that is not one I can skip, unfortunately.
Could we start on the 9th?
Yeah.
Well, I don't... Well, except we're not going to do the 23rd then. I don't think that would be fine.
So we do 9th, 16th with department heads, and then that gives us some time to... For them to do work and get answers and come back if that's... Because I have a feeling like the first one's going to be what? Presentation and a little active Q and A dialogue for those that we have questions with. And then the second one is probably kind of the responses and going through them. So that gives them a few weeks to get that for us.
Oh, yeah. We could do like the 9th and the 16th.
And then like...
And then maybe the 7th?
Of December?
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say the 30th, but I don't know where Thanksgiving falls now. Is that 24th?
20th?
Yeah, okay.
20th?
That's what I thought.
Yep.
How do you remember what tomorrow is?
Do we really want to meet on Pearl Harbor Day?
What? Oh, I didn't...
December 7th, right?
Do you want to do 9:16 and 30? November 30th?
9:16 and 30? That's something to play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
7:00 PM?
Yep.
Here? Assuming it's available?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, we're not going to be meeting online anymore, that's right.
So I guess as part of the guidance, and maybe just as a footnote, right? We're going to want to let the department heads know Capital's going to review them on November 9th. And then we'll let them know... Anyone who has a request, right, should come in and we can review them on the 9th, on the 16th?
I thought we were reviewing on the 2nd.
Yeah.
2nd is a planning board meeting, that conflicts.
Oh, oh.
So we were going to start on the 9th and then the 16th, and then for presentations and opening questions. And then 30th would be follow-up for any department heads who had responses due.
We've limited that to two meetings then, because we were talking two with the possibility of more.
Right.
But that sounded like it's only two.
We can pencil in the 7th or the 14th for, you know, for another open meeting if you did it.
And this is just the tentative plan? Obviously, this has changed in the past, and it can evolve. And we put notations on here that it can evolve.
Yeah, let's make the changes and see how it looks after. Yeah, that sounds good. Sounds good.
I'll make those changes.
Thank you.
If you don't want to do the 7th, I do think we should put one more on, because we're going to want to
I think so, too.
Kind of come back and either close or...
Or at least an open date that we can use or not. Yeah.
14th? If the 7th is undesirable?
Sure.
Actually, if we do the 14th, that would give any department heads... If we kind of structured it where the 16th are the non-questioned department heads, the 30th are the question department heads, we will do our best to get those questions to the department heads ahead of that meeting. If we penciled that 14th in, like you're suggesting, that would give them the time to get us some answers and come back to us.
Yeah. Yep.
I mean, it probably depends on how many different department heads submit things, too.
Yeah.
Some years, it's not very many. It may not be more than one night. Okay. Plenty of edits now.
Yep, I'll make all those changes.
Anything else Capital changes?
No, I looked at the sheets, the sheets look good.
Okay.
These are the ones that we fixed up for last year, and I was pretty happy with how they worked last year.
So it's a fillable format still?
Yep.
Oh, the form itself? Anything else on the calendar before we go on to the form? Anything for finance with the calendar? Good with the joint meetings, good as is?
Yeah, I think that looks good.
Board? Anything else on the calendar?
No.
No.
Calendar as edited.
Okay.
And are we all comfortable with the changes we discussed? Execute them, off it goes. Don't need to see it again, right? We'll just send it out.
Send it out.
They're closing off, and they're subject to change, so...
Got it. Thank you all for that.
Okay, then the... You wanted to jump to the Capital request form? Let's just back up slightly, just to go in order for my sake, if you would. FY '24 operating budget guidance memo. This is really focused for the finance committee and the Select Board.
FinCom thought it was fine.
Okay. Select Board? Thing you wanted to see different?
I just want to earmark dates potentially for Select Board and FinCom to discuss the wage review, because that's listed in here as something that we will be doing this year. So if we're not penciling in tentative times to do that...
That's probably October, November work?
Yeah.
Most likely.
So just keep... I mean, it doesn't have to go on the calendar today, but we have to... We're going to have to come together and figure out
Timing?
Timing, to make that fairly early, because I don't want to wait until we've had all the presentations and we have, you know, everything in. We're going to have to have that conversation earlier.
I'm assuming we'll do a bulk of that. There's some data gathering to do right now, you know, in the next week's month or so. But most of the budget work doesn't really start for us until, you know... And even for Capital until, you know, November, but for the Board and FinCom until January, so... I mean, I agree, and I think we, you know, hopefully we'll have either a plan or, you know, a thought, kind of where we think we're going to go, or at least have a bulk of the work done and be kind of... And hopefully the finishing stages of determining if, what if any changes are we making to the wage tables, right? And what's the basis?
My only thought is, last time we did this, some of those meetings were very lengthy, and I wonder if that should be its own separate meeting, separate from a regular Monday night Board of Selectman meeting. So maybe on a different night, because I know some of those meetings in the past were very long.
I don't mind it either way. My thoughts on it, though, is those meetings were long because you were creating something that didn't exist. And this is a modification of something that already exists. It's just the table's there, the wages are there, and the scope of work, the job responsibilities and duties are all lined out. And you're basically just reviewing them to make sure that they are still in line with what the job responsibilities are, what the, you know, post-responsibilities are, and is the pay scale in the table as it's presented still something that we're acceptable with? Or do we want to adjust it based on the job responsibilities, the market in the area, the cost of living, all of that taken in? I'm not talking about... My request wouldn't be to go through and start from scratch again and rebuild the entire system. You all did a fantastic job in building that. I would not want to spend all that time redoing it. Just reviewing it to make sure that it's still adequate.
I hear you, but I stand... I, going through this process last time, and knowing not only the work that we did here, but having adequate time for our employees to speak if they wanted to speak or weigh in or anything like that, some of those meetings were very long, and I suspect it will be again. There's still a lot to do with this process, and I think... I mean, it's your meeting, you guys are going to do whatever you want. But I just, from someone else who has to sit at the table and do this work, I really want to make sure it is given the time that it deserves.
I think generally, the board is open either way.
Yeah.
If we have a really light agenda, maybe it's okay. If we don't, I don't think there's any problem with scheduling it. It's a little bit easier for us to do it, too, just in general, because we're meeting every other week normally now, so we're not as jam-packed week to week with meetings. I think there are some position, job, scope of work criteria. Help me, Brian, I can't think of the right words. But there's some positions that need some discussion and review about what their scope of duties and work are. So those are going to add time to what we're doing, I think, that are going to get proposed or presented. There are things that we tabled last time and didn't really deal with as well. There's a few positions, and there's a few... And all of kind of the elected officials piece.
Right.
We did something, but it was mostly a, in my opinion. We don't know what else to do, so right now, we'll just do that, and we'll come back to it when we get... When we've done it for a few years and we kind of have a feel for this, so... Maybe we don't do anything different, but it's just another item that I think we plan to flesh out a little more than we did the first time, so... So, yeah, so I think there are more things as we put together, though. Maybe the scope of things that need review and discussion, so... It's already middle of September, shockingly. What are you thinking in terms of the background work needed to get some of the basis information? Do you need to meet with us, or do you already have a good sense of what you're gathering to start with before we begin the discussions?
Yes, so I have a good sense of what, based on previous conversations and discussions, what you're looking for for content.
Okay.
So I've begun the data collection process that will take a few weeks. And then just to organize that data into tables and tools that you can manipulate and discuss for your public meetings. So I likely should have that done by the end of October.
Completed by the end of October?
The collection of data and putting into a format for you all to start reviewing and using, yes. Any manipulation or drafts of what that looks like for application, obviously, I think is a work in progress as you all go through whatever process you define, whatever's informed through your public process, so... But at least the data for you all to begin your review and begin your discussions. I mean, barring I don't have any unpristine issues that completely take over the calendar, that's my plan, is to have that for the end of October for you.
I hate saying this, because the list is long, but I really think we should at least be having our first meeting by mid-October, even if that's just maybe some preliminary discussion about what you, you know, the boundaries of what you've gathered or you're already putting together. And maybe it's the list of different topics and ensure that we've cut... We have everything that we expect to want to cover. At least as a groundwork meeting, you know, and...
Yep.
Because if we start this in November, Capital's already starting, budget's only, you know, 60 days away. I just feel like it's getting tight, so I...
No, I agree.
And I don't want to put more pressure on the office. I know we have a lot going on, too, but I think we should maybe put together what we have and a kind of a scope of what we think we're going to discuss. Come together in that joint meeting, we'll schedule something for mid-October and go from there. Just to get it going.
Yep.
If that works, if FinCom... Okay.
Okay.
Anything else in the guidance document? Any changes to the form? Good with it?
Good with it.
Good? Okay, operating budget, check. Capital budget guidance form. And I know they're not all there tonight, and I'd have to read through it again if it's in there. I don't think it really is, but maybe with this, and we may have said it in prior years, feedback from any of the boards, commissions, departments on things they feel are missing in it? They're welcome to give that feedback in any step of this, right? To the boards, the FinCom, Capital, to say, hey, this doesn't... For them to give us feedback on all of it. Like, I think there's some guidance missing. Could you guys do, you know, just kind of put that open-ended question out there?
I think we should have another meeting. What meeting are we having?
We're going to meet with all the department heads and boards and commissions in one night and ask them what they think of this.
Let's just do it on a Saturday, and we'll make it a potluck.
Feedback, because it was...
On non-town property. Okay.
I assume it's just iterative anyways.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they... Just to make sure the message is out there, that this is open dialogue, too. It's a two-way conversation about the whole process, so if they have thoughts or opinions, requests, things that they'd like to say, or they think could be better, we're welcome to hear it.
I think reiterating that's important, but I also think whatever we can do to encourage boards and commissions to please involve themselves in this process. We've had several years where some boards, commissions, or departments have not engaged in this process, even though they were invited to the table to do so. And as a result, you were left going, are we just budgeting what we budgeted last year? Are we moving this item? And so you had to sort of do that at the table without them. So, yes, and I would also encourage anybody who maybe has not been at the table before to please use these opportunities to come to the table and have that interactive process. Otherwise, we don't know what to budget for them.
Maybe in the guidance, we should be clear that the tentative calendar is there. You are expected to have representatives there to present your budget. If you don't, we won't accept changes. We'll level fund it, or we'll choose what we want to do with it. But if you're not there to speak to it, I mean, that sounds a little harsh, but I agree with you. We're not talking about a few hundred dollars. If you need the money, you should come talk to us about what it's for and how you plan to use it. I know some of the conversations are, okay, we're good with it, thanks, but it's once a year.
I think we talked about that at the, kind of at the end last year, that everybody had to come. I know, at least for FinCom and Capital, that's one of the rare times where we actually get to see all the department heads or chairpersons. So it's kind of nice for us to get caught up on, hey, we did this, or this happened, or, you know, this project got stalled because of. So I think for us, at least, it's a nice kind of informational opportunity to kind of get, you know, looped in on some of that stuff.
Yeah, there's not a lot of those opportunities, so I agree. So, and I would say with that, if the date doesn't work, reach out. Like, this is tentative, and we can move things around. So if one night doesn't work for you, we can move you around the night, so, you know, but let's sort that out ahead of time.
Okay.
Scott, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I was just going to mention looking at the Capital request. So you were...
Yeah, yeah, I kind of just circled back to that.
We jumped back, but I just wanted to make sure, looking at the Capital budget request, when Capital is meeting, we had talked about it in one of our previous Select Board meetings that not only looking at financially can we do it, but the bandwidth and capacity of the department heads and the departments themselves to take on those projects, how much office time it would take for, you know, the town as a whole with administration of each project, and just making sure that we can accomplish them, not just afford them. So it's a good time to start that conversation when Capital's looking at it and saying, great, we can afford them, but can you even get these done? You've got 82 projects that you put forward, let's tone it down.
And free on the plan still and costs?
Right, you know.
The willingness that Brian put together last year in regard, actually, I think it was Brian and Mariah, that put together the list of projects in, yeah.
Over time? The amount of project list?
And which ones were continuing, you know, which ones, and how close to the finish they were, I think was very helpful.
Mariah was just updating that the other day, so...
Say, can I recommend... Well, go ahead, you're going to say the same thing I am.
I was just going to say, to let his point, could that be provided to FinCom and Capital Absolutely. Before budget season starts?
Yeah, I know, she was working on those updates, so this is timely.
Could we look to see if Mariah's available, maybe for the first or second? Maybe second is better, but first or second or both Capital meetings to join us? Just maybe in the first one to get a sense of what are the projects to add to the list? Because she has a project list that may not include the new things, to see how those overlap, and maybe she can pencil them in, so we can see, okay, what's that overlay look like now as we're talking with the department heads about capacity on top of funding and plan?
Yeah, so then November 9th meeting?
I was actually going to say, maybe that... I feel like that should be a joint meeting with everyone, because FinCom may have questions about that as well, Capital may have questions, and Board of Selectmen may have questions. So would it make more sense to have her come do that at a joint?
I'm sure, but I was thinking, just in the Capital, kind of preliminarily looking at, and, you know, what's priority, what's budget, and what's capacity?
Okay.
Just to whether or not to put them on the list at all, like to consider them and to talk with the department head about. Maybe that's helpful. Maybe it's the first meeting, maybe the second meeting, just to have her be able to kind of pull up and go, well, Highway has eight projects, five are still in progress, eight more he's asking for. I don't know how that's going to work. I know, but you're here so I can pick on you in front of you, sir. He's ignoring me.
I think I might agree with Ms. Smith, that it'd be more of a joint, because at some point, you guys are going to want to know and want to have a breakdown of what it is and what they are. And wouldn't that be a little bit more time-saving to have her do it one time instead of two or three times?
The Select Board normally meets quarterly or every three times a year to go over that list. So we just done it about a month ago, month and a half ago.
Okay.
Right, and we've been invited, I think, to come to most of those. I was thinking of, we won't have that kind of tentatively fleshed out on what projects we think are going to be added to the list till Capital goes through the project, through that process, because most of what's on that list is Capital-driven projects. I would think when the three groups get together to look at that capacity and funding and budget overall, that might be the Capital presentation to the Board and FinCom, maybe? At that meeting, have her there as well? have her there as well. I'm sure we will want and be asking her to join us on multiple budgeting meetings, you know, and different, different planning pieces around funding, around capacity, planning, you know, all that kind of pieces that she's been helping us visualize better on what, what that is, so I think both, I guess, is what I'm thinking. If that works, but do it however everyone wants.
I will make her aware that there's a request that we have this updated, sent out to the groups, and plan to attend one of the first meetings in November, and then as we need to have any other joint meetings, I'm sure we can make that happen.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. And that was kind of coming off your capacity question.
Yeah.
Comment, right, yeah.
Yep.
Would you ask her also if she has any funding opportunities that she's aware of, just maybe having that kind of quick list, as Capital talks about what projects there are, maybe she can offer some thoughts on what funding mechanisms might exist in the coming year for those to line up.
I think they heard last year too.
We talked about that, would be better off leading in instead of reacting?
Yep.
Okay. So hopefully in the memo, when we made some of those changes, we talked in the opening about the need to also identify the capacity, explain what's needed for the Capital Planning Committee to accept the request, and then reiterated at the bottom, the need for the department to prioritize their projects. So I know that there was a two-step question that Capital had last year that we were trying to grapple with, and it was, the first was, all of the projects used to come in high priority.
Right.
So you have six high priorities in the same department, and then the whole town, everything's high priority, how, it was being left to Capital to make that decision as to what was going to happen.
Yep.
So we wanted to be clear that they had to give every project a ranking, so that form has that.
Only use the number once.
You can only use it once, yeah, and so the departments have that instruction, and then as a Capital Planning Committee, then you have to look town-wide and say what fits within the overall universe, and what you can fund and, and bring to town meeting. So does that still feel clear enough with what you were trying to accomplish?
I think so.
Okay.
In the opening, you said we're reviewing the five-year plan, Capital? Do we want to put anything in there? I think we talked about things that didn't happen, didn't get funded in prior years, or just kind of nebulous? Do we want them to ensure they're providing any new requests, any requests, oh, that was, I'm sorry, one of the initial things was, we didn't have request forms for things that were on their plan for the current year, in some cases, I think initially, and so one is, if it's the year you want it, we should have a request form, if that's FY24. If you're planning to need it in the next five years, we either want to see it on a plan or see the request form, I think, was it request form?
Yep.
For the next five years, and any that haven't been done, that were due on your plan, update, right? Either a new form if it's moved, or just tell us?
No, I don't think we wanted, did we want request forms for something that wasn't coming for five years?
I think we wanted to keep track of them, at least.
Okay.
Because we don't want to end up with, you know, we've been waiting on it for four years, and all of a sudden it just shows up, and it's $450,000.
Yeah.
If we've got them five years in advance, we can say, okay, we've earmarked that this is big.
Okay, that makes sense.
Do we have the, do we have the kind of spreadsheet of plan in a stage where we can, that we're comfortable, it's good enough that we could just send the next five years that we see?
Yeah.
Out to each one of them?
Brian does every year.
You do, right?
We should, yeah.
So then, maybe we don't need a form?
Well.
For anything, if it's on that list.
It sounds like you want to look back as well, instead of just five years forward.
I think the form is nice, partly because if the, if the item has gone up in price, which it presumably has, or if, if the need of it has changed, I mean, we've seen that with Highway, then.
Thanks for coming, Brian.
We had to have someone.
You're a good example. I, I mean, I, I like having something on paper.
I think this year, particularly with the five-year plan, at least as kind of the keeper of the spreadsheet, my goal would be to really ask the department heads to go back and look. I know, I'm going to pick on someone else, Chief Wonka has had a fire truck for many years, and every year, we don't get a request form, and we just push it out, and we just push it out, and that's, when he put that in at the inception of this program, I believe it's in there at like $750,000, I'm sure it's probably closer to a million by now, I mean, and so it's something that I would hate for him to, you know, be thinking, hey, I put this request form in, all right, it's on the spreadsheet, but we've never actually received a request form, and I think that's where we've always gone back and forth, if it's on the spreadsheet, do department heads just assume we're looking and reviewing that item because it's on the spreadsheet, and then they don't do a request form? And, and there's a day where Chief Wonka's going to come in and sit down in front of us and say, where's my fire truck? And we're all going to go, you're not getting one.
Well, additionally, if, if things have gone up in price, then that gives him the opportunity, at least once a year, to then review.
Yep.
What the current item actually costs.
Yep, and I know, like, just thinking with where there have been changes, I know at the element, at the elementary school, you know, when the program was done, it was Jim Trill who did that, did it, now we have someone new in that position, so maybe she feels the request should be reshuffled a little bit. So I think really asking them to go back and just give that a really thorough look and say, this is, and really lock in dates, and if, you know, if Chief Wonka's fire truck has to be this year, and we can no longer push it out, then that's something I think we need to have communicated to us.
So I need to revise this guidance to make it clear that you want requests, yes, for FY24, but anything in the next five years, and just because it's currently on the plan is not enough in and of itself, maybe we just say, if a new request is not received, anything that was currently on the plan for the next five years is coming off.
And please update the costs of, of any items that you've already submitted.
Okay.
Well, we're going to require them to submit it new, right, so, so just update the cost.
Well, yeah.
This speaks to all the pieces of detail we want for the request form, if we're looking beyond this, you know, the, the coming year, do we want to let, just be clear that maybe that doesn't need quite the same level of spec quote detail?
Yeah.
We're looking for more of generalized for year two to five of what you're looking for.
Well, park is acceptable.
Anticipated escalation cost, you know, we're not asking you to go get three quotes and two specs to.
Correct.
Give us for the further out stuff, right? I just don't want to.
Absolutely.
Overdo that legwork.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
So anything that wasn't done that's in the past, anything that's in the current, coming year, and anything that's in the future, if you don't, future five years, if you don't submit a form, it's coming off.
Okay.
Pretty clear, and then we can kind of have a good starting point again?
Yep, okay. If I make those changes, is it acceptable to issue this guidance?
You might want to update your date, though, I believe it's the 20th, or it's Saturday. October 22nd?
September 22nd.
Oh, the due date? Due date for the Capital? I think we said 10/20, right?
In the orange bracket.
Thursday, the 20th?
Yeah, I should do that, huh?
I mean, it's a task, who shows up on Thursday, who shows up on Saturday?
No, I do not want to be here, I'm not there.
That affects the priority of funding, no.
I will not be sitting here, I'll make that change.
And so bulk of the language change is really that last paragraph.
Yes.
And the form, I believe I was hearing good?
Yep.
Did I miss anything, Brian, on the budget planning?
No, you all gave me exactly what I needed.
For guidance, so thank you.
Anything else on budget planning from the groups?
Excited to discuss.
I will not say waiting with bated breath, but it can be a very fun process. I believe that is all we had for the joint meetings.
Yep.
Anything else for us while you're here?
I don't think so.
All right, then Capital will be meeting in October, unless you meet sooner, and we'll see you in January or so, unless something comes up. FinCom will plan something in October. For that, I'm moving, adjourn the joint meeting of Finance and Capital, and continue the Select Board meeting at 8:16 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you, Linda, being our moderator for the night as well.
Good job.
Discussion of the Patrol Officer Screening Committee Recommendation, Chief Hulse, would The Patrol Officer Screening Committee met, did interviews with the, some of the application pool they had been building.
We did, yeah.
In August.
Yeah, we interviewed four.
And based on that review, the committee unanimously recommended to move forward one candidate, Matthew, help me, I don't want to pronounce it wrong.
I'm going to pronounce it wrong.
Okay.
Zeomic? Zeomic.
Zeomic, all right, well, that's what I'm going to go with, apologies, sir, if it's wrong, for a full-time position, and he is a currently active, full-time certified officer.
He has six years on the job, has all the required certifications.
And the rest of the pool was not, at this time, fully certified?
That's, they did not have the certifications that, that Matthew had, correct.
And we have his information here, any questions, comments? Would the board like to interview Mr. Zeomic themselves?
I don't think I need to, to interview him, just basing that, that statement on looking through his certifications that he's gone through, the CIT certified Crisis Intervention Training, he's dealt with DART, which is a drug abuse and recovery team, or drug addiction recovery team, out of Hampshire County area, he's got all the training and certification over the last six years that we are bringing into our department and, and, you know, utilizing daily, so I'm very comfortable with seeing his work history, seeing his education and certifications, and the work history that he was involved in throughout Amherst Police Department, Nantucket, and so on.
Yeah, just to your point, sir, the CIT is a 40-hour course that we have to send all of our officers to, or the majority of our officers will be needing to go to that to, to fulfill the requirements for the DMH grant.
I was thinking of that when you said it, the DMH program with us.
That's correct, sir.
We're going to, yeah.
Yeah, we're actually.
It's a key, it's a key piece, right?
We're getting ready to send Sergeant Pecos in October, and then Officer Barber in November, and then we'll have, you know, if, if you guys take the recommendation, we'll have a third, and Officer Gordon also already has it, so that'll be four of our officers that will have it.
CIT is what?
Critical Incident Team?
Or Crisis Intervention. Critical Incident, Crisis Intervention, there are different variations of it, but how to deal with a crisis, a lot of, a lot of calls now are dealing with mental health, and how to, how to de-escalate.
And we'll give them a good, the background they need when they're working with.
Yes.
Our CSO.
Correct.
Individual on those calls will be better trained to.
Correct.
Support that incident.
Chief, have we received certificates from the candidate for each of these certifications?
I did not require them, Selectmen Benberry, but I can get them, that would be part of his training record, that would be in a CADIS, and/or, I haven't even contacted his current employer, but I would imagine that his current employer would have all the certifications and everything on file, and I'm more than happy to collect those, you know, if we move to the next phase of the background.
Okay.
And that's always, would be required, if we do an offer, that's part of that whole pre-employment package, they have to get everything that matches to.
Sometimes people will submit their, their certifications, but.
Okay.
We do not require them ahead of time.
And to be clear, I'm not opposed to interviewing him, I just don't, personally don't feel that necessarily based on being the one candidate that is fully qualified for the job, having gone through the screening committee to do a follow-up. If there was two or three that were close, I think it might make more sense for me, but if others, you know, want to see the individual and have a meeting, I'm more than willing to go through that process.
I'm of the same opinion as you, and Bill, you were, you already have interviewed him right at part of the screening.
Right, I've already interviewed him, so I, I don't, I don't see his, his credentials, and I don't see a reason, considering that there's no other candidates with his experience and his certifications that's qualified to, to step forward, I see no reason to, to interview him at this point, although I, I would like to add that, that we, I mentioned in the past that, that as the officers come on, we get to meet them, and we haven't done that yet in any official way, and, and the public needs to see them as well, so.
Yeah.
I would still like to see that happen.
Very good, I can make that happen, bring him to one of the Select Board meetings. I know Officer Gordon has started a program with Cops and Coffee.
Yes, I saw that.
Where she's trying to, you know, get the community involved, and I actually had a conversation with Officer Barber, and, and I believe Officer Gordon reached out to him too, to say, hey, I'm going to do another one in October, maybe you would like to be part of that. But yes, Bill, that's not a problem, we can definitely get him here to the, to a Select Board meeting too.
I think we had just started trying to do like a slaring in, just formally add a meeting to, just to kind of, that opportunity, and we could always do a picture and an announcement on the, on the website and things like that, social media, just before COVID, I think we did it like once, and then COVID, and then everything kind of.
We did it with Chris Minor and Officer Flower.
And Officer Flower, yeah.
Officer Flower, that was the last time.
And then COVID, right, so, no, I think it's good you bring it up, we should, we should get back to that.
Sure.
So it sounds like we're all in agreement that it makes sense to move forward with making an offer to Officer Zumick. We need to determine what a starting rate is, I believe historically, we had discussed step one to three as the kind of standard starting range, and I think because most, with the exception of Officer Gordon, most officers came with no experience and not full training, we've been generally always at one, so we haven't had much of this, needed to make these sorts of decisions. Did you have any recommendations, Chief, for us?
I would recommend somewhere between the four, five, six mark, is, is what I think would be adequate at this point, with, with the hopes of more of the, the five, six, but I, I do want to give you a fair range. I do believe he has the training and the experience that, that would surpass step one, two, or three.
And five, six is what?
What is the rate? I can grab it, it's, I do.
If you go to your.
I have it right here.
In your emails, Brian just sent you one, just before this meeting started.
So, four, five, six, four is 2381, five, 2429, and six, 2478.
Six is what?
2478. 2478. Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, I'm not rushing, I'm just
I'm just going through and rehashing the amount of experience he has. 2016, I believe, he became an officer, so he's got six years of experience coming in. That's not to say that we would honor every single step of that in our pay scale, but I think it makes sense, I'm in between five and six in my mind right now of where it makes sense to place him if we were to make an offer.
No.
I would, I would feel comfortable with making an offer at six.
Step six?
2478.
Yeah, it's not very often that we get officers that come to Irving fully trained and ready to go, and we're, the training is internal training on internal practices and layout of the town, as opposed to training on how to be a police officer.
No, there's a difference in the cost, for sure.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking through, like, when we've had to do this before, it's not, you know, necessarily been step for year and
Correct, it's not always step for year.
You know, of, of where does that put us, you know, is it more of four? But, and I know, you know, we're going through a review process coming up about the overall table, so that may shift in terms of, and so maybe I'm thinking a little bit less about what is the dollar in that bucket today, but what step makes sense, because the value of that step may change, you know, as we're looking forward here, but, you know.
I was just going to throw it out there, I said I was looking at either five or six, you just threw out four, Bill, you threw out six, cut it in the middle at five, you know, puts a rate of 2429, step five, it's above what we normally would bring somebody in. Thoughts?
Yeah, I have some, some concerns that I think our clear objective is to bring in, to bring in more qualified candidates, and candidates who don't require additional training and man-hours to get, to get ready to go on the road, on the street, and to serve the community, and I'm kind of feeling like, although I feel quite comfortable with this officer studying, based on his education and training, his bachelor's degree and other issues that he has in certifications, although I feel comfortable with, with the position of six. I feel a little uncomfortable in the way that we are doing this process, because we don't really have any process for what to pay an individual coming in who's fully trained.
Right.
And we haven't had that discussion. We've been kind of doing it piecemeal by individual, but there's no real concrete, this is, this is the step we're going to follow to reach what is, and a pay scale that we're, we're happy with as a community, so.
Maybe I misunderstand what you're saying, but I, I guess I, at least from what I'm understanding, I would disagree. We valued, maybe the term we used, but we, we took what a patrol officer's scope of, you know, duties is, and we valued that and created a step table around those skills. Those were, step one's the assumption that you're trained, that this was not a, P2 step one was not an untrained officer, it was a trained officer with in theory no experience or limited experience. And we did have discussions about one to three being a hiring ban. As a standard, obviously, we would consider, and as we did with Officer Gordon, 30 years experience, bringing her in at, you know, 14, rather than, you know, one to three, obviously. But maybe I misunderstand what you're saying, but I don't think there's, just because we haven't done it and we've always started at one is because no one's actually met that minimum criteria. But the step was rated at minimum qualifications, right, and up from there. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, that's what we built it from, right?
Yeah.
Or am I not following what you're saying, and maybe I missed what you were
I agree, but I also, I think, if I, if I can, Bill, I think part of what you were getting at is, when we have candidates, and now these are two in a row, that come in with a lot more experience than just somebody who is academy-trained and minimal experience, somebody who comes in with five, six, seven, or, you know, in Officer Gordon's case, you know, 30 years of experience, we don't have parameters that we follow about how to supersede our placement of one through three.
Right.
Typically, when, in a small town, we get candidates that are new out of the academy, they've been with other part-time departments, they want to move up to a full-time department, they come to Irving, they haven't had a lot of experience in larger departments, or a lot of extra training outside of the academy. This candidate, and our previous appointment, comes in with a lot more training than somebody who's just gone through MPTC Training Academy and fulfills the basics. This person has done additional training above and beyond that over the last six years. And I think that's what you're getting at, Bill, is we don't have a process for how to how to honor that, or how to work with that, there's no, there's no rhyme or reason for how we place somebody in anything above three.
Okay, okay.
Can I also add to that? And just, you know, from my position, it's difficult when we, when we go to hire somebody, because that's what most people want to know, well, what's my pay?
Right.
And we tell them, well, this is, this is the pay scale, you know, typically, somebody's hired one through three, and sometimes you have people that say, okay, thanks, and walk away, but in this situation where, you know, we looked at Officer Gordon, and now potentially this, this officer, with the additional training, it kind of puts me in a situation where, you know, do I offer him one through three, because most likely, they're not going to take it. I, I'm not saying he wouldn't take a one through three, but, so if I had, or, you know, any department, maybe, I don't want to speak for the departments, but had like, yeah, okay, one through three is kind of the starting for your baseline, but we do recognize four, five, six to be, it would be helpful, because maybe we offer him four, five, six, and he still says no, I don't know.
Sure.
But maybe we would have wasted, you know, not wasted his time, not wasted the committee's time, not waste our time tonight to sit through, just, just food for thought, I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, private sector, usually all of them say, you know, compensation commensurate with experience and qualification.
Right, so I was actually
But it's totally ambiguous, it's no different, but it just acknowledges that where you fit on that is relative to what you bring, it's not just fixed, and so I follow now, kind of, I think, what you were getting at.
And I actually like the ambiguous ability to look at that and say, somebody comes in with, you know, I know why there was a parameter of, you know, typically one to three, because it was done in, to keep things fair, so to, you know, use that word. You know, you don't want to hire somebody today at a step one, and then six weeks from now, somebody at a step 10, and now there's tension, and, but if there's
Correct.
if there's parameters around why we're doing what we're doing, and there's justification for why we're doing what we're doing, and we have that in the process itself written out, then it makes sense, and, you know, what are the criteria, what would, and it works for all departments. You have somebody, Glenn, I'm going to pick on you again, your department, people come in with certifications, they have their hoister's license, they do different things, they have different, you know, OSHA certifications, does that put them in entry level, or does that put them three, five, seven steps higher, you know? So I think in part of that first review of wage and salary, that's part of that discussion.
Absolutely.
We're not going to address that tonight, I don't think.
No, 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 that's fine.
But when we're talking about addressing the wage and salary placement in the table for new hirees, should be part of that conversation.
And it gives, like I said, it just gives us a good idea, too, because we can say to him, yeah, most likely you'll be somewhere between here, and then they could say no
Right.
or yes, at that point, before they even get
If there's a, if there's a well, if there's a well-defined policy that sort of gives criteria of, you can have, and we can always fluctuate from it, but it gives a guidance so that the department heads could say, typically, with your training and experience, you might fall in this range, but ultimately, the decision is up to the appointing authority.
Sure, sure, but it's good guidance for them to have a sense of where, do I want to put my name in the hat, right? I was coming from a place of just being cautious about creating inequity, because that's what we came from, and what we did all that work to get away from, so not to say that I don't agree with you, I do think we need a better process where to place more qualified individuals as we go through this. Obviously, the discretion is still the discretion, and that's what we're really talking about tonight, but thank you, I didn't follow that initially, so.
Having said all of that, I'm actually going to agree with Bill, I think, I originally was thinking five or six, but I would lean on step six.
Well, I, I am, I don't have a, I'm not against it, so I guess we'll, I don't have a strong opinion that it should be five instead, so I am fine with that, and supporting that, so anything else we would need to hash out, are we ready to make a motion to
I think we're ready.
make an offer? Okay, one of you like to do that?
And I'm going to apologize to this gentleman one more time.
Hopefully, we're not mangling it.
Is it Zomic?
Zeomic.
Zeomic, okay, I wasn't sure, I had heard it, and my brain just said, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right again. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Matthew Zeomic as a full-time benefited patrol officer in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 133, for a term of one year pending successful completion of a pre-employment query, driving history check, health exam, and drug screen, and psychological examination at a rate of grade two, step six. You want the dollar amount?
Nope, but I am realizing when I left
You're missing probationary?
The effective date, yeah.
How effective date?
We're going to start there. We're going to pause that one, because we have to figure out, there was an inclination of availability of 9/20 on his application, is that still?
He was looking at, I think when we spoke with him, Bill, he said sometime in October, he thought would be a good, a good timeframe.
Yeah, and we probably need at least three to four weeks.
Yeah.
To do all of ours. It's maybe four weeks, oh. Yeah.
October 1st?
No, it'd be longer.
No, we'd be November.
We'd be talking October
We're talking the 10th?
But you've always put on there or sooner, or sooner is the flexibility.
What's the, do you guys meet on Monday? I don't have a calendar in front of me, is there a
Well, we wouldn't need to meet again, it would just be effective date.
It would just be getting everything done, and then, do we want to say 10/24? That's just, it's about five weeks?
Sure.
Just in case, I just know things are, yeah, or sooner, I just know things are
Do we have a pay, is there, do we, do we know what the pay periods are?
That is, I believe.
Would be the start of the new pay period?
Mon, Monday was the pay period start, right, this last Monday?
Correct, yes.
So 12th, 26th, 10th, and then 24th, if I'm reading the calendar right, which is always true, but
All right, so we are going to go back to that motion.
Is there a probationary on this that we have to call out?
Yeah, it's a one-year. It's a one-year.
You're missing in there? Oh, that's the term, it's not probation.
It's the term, it doesn't say probation, it's just a term of one-year.
Because that's the MGL term, yeah, okay, got it, sorry.
Is everybody still clear with the motion as I was reading it?
Yep, up to step, step six.
Up to grade P2, step six, with an effective date on or before of October 24th, 2022.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We can do that tomorrow, start this process tomorrow. Thank you, Chief, and Bill, for, and everybody else that was on that committee? Yeah. The Screening Committee, thank you.
At this point, I think we're still going to leave it open, but we'll come back to that in some future meetings and see where we're going with that, and if we want to close it yet or not.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Next topic, include you as well, Chief, next couple, surplus equipment request for Cruiser. So we have a surplus
Sorry, yeah.
Accidents happen.
Yeah.
Surplus equipment request for the 2019 Dodge Cruiser, Dodge Charger Cruiser. After the motor vehicle accident, the insurance company deemed it a total loss.
That's correct, sir.
And I believe we've already, or are in the process of moving any outfit equipment that is viable and useful for future use of ours.
Yes, sir.
And my understanding is that we have replacement coverage on that.
Correct.
And so they're looking at the build sheet and everything, and I'm unclear on whether replacement means whatever we can buy now that's equivalent, or the exact same vehicle today, and I think we're still figuring that out.
I'm just waiting on confirmation from the insurance company.
Right, so whether we, you know, we're replacing that with an SUV, that's a different, it's a hybrid, that may be a different price plan, I don't know if it's going to cover that as replacement, or we're going to have a majority of it, so we'll probably be coming back to talk about that as we figure that out.
Yep.
I hope we have an update for you at your next meeting.
Okay. And obviously, we would have to surplus it and sign the title over for us to get that.
Right.
Correct.
Did I miss anything?
Was there salvageable equipment in the, in the vehicle?
We will pull the radio, watch guard, which will eventually be replaced anyways, the citation printer. And then, depending on what we get, all will depend on, you know, we're probably not going to go with another Dodge Charger 2019, most likely, probably can't find one, so things like the cell, the prisoner transport cell, you can't take that out of a Charger and put it in a Ford, so, but there might be some of the lights and stuff, but definitely the radios, it didn't have a repeater in it, but the radios, the watch guard, and maybe the computer mount, that might be able to be salvageable.
Okay.
What we can, we will. And that will help on the cost of the next one, if we
Right, I was going to say, not, even if we can't use it, I'm not sure what the insurance company would say, but if there are salvageable items that we may not use again, but other departments may need, there's other people driving 2019s, or, you know, they're
Or similar, same, same body style for it out, yeah.
It might be worth looking, you know, obviously, the insurance company probably wants as much as they can as part of that, turning it over with the title, but if there's no pushback on that
Does what we pull get reduced from the build sheet in terms of replacement value?
I'll discuss that, anything that was not affixed as part of the Cruiser, like watch guard and these other pieces, those are ours to take out. I will follow up with watch guard, or with the insurance company about the other items.
I'm just wondering.
I was just curious if those were damaged or in it, do we get the replacement value on those outfits as well, and I think we do, but if we take them out, then we don't, I would assume, so
Right.
I don't know, to your question, right, I don't know if it's better to leave it in in terms of replacement value, if we can't use it.
I'll follow the insurance company and give you firm
Yeah, it's a lot of headache, if we're going to lose the value of it to then take it out and have to put it on bid, it makes no sense. Just leave it in and get the replacement value of the insurance.
I should have an update for your next meeting.
Okay.
Were you going to add something, sir?
No.
If we leave sensitive equipment in the Cruiser, that would preclude that at some point, that if that's going to go somewhere, it's going to go to another police department, someone in law enforcement.
I guess we clarified that with the insurance company, I believe if they're taking it totaled, then they're responsible for removing, or wherever they move it to next, removing anything that can't be sold to a civilian, if it goes to a civilian, I would assume that responsibility falls to the insurance company.
Yep.
But we can confirm, we should confirm.
Correct, I will confirm that.
All right.
Any other questions, concerns?
Nope.
Fortunately, the officer is healthy and uninjured, and everyone
Everybody was seated, everybody was seen and then released that night, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
That's what matters.
Yep.
So in terms of surplusing the equipment, I know typically, if this was reused equipment, or equipment that had value that you were going to sell, you typically do three readings. Would you like to do that in this case, or because this has a very specific path, is this something that you want to deem surplus?
I don't have a problem deeming it surplus tonight and moving it, it's a totaled vehicle that has, you know
The only thing that's happening is the insurance is taking it. There's no options, so.
If the insurance takes it, then there's nothing we can do. If they don't, I'm pretty sure we can find use for it.
I expect the replacement coverage and the fact that they've totaled it and they're, we're expecting that, that's the best path, but.
I don't know, they, we, in the past, we've kept stuff.
The cruiser?
We've moved lights.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but the cruiser itself, once it's been totaled, we've.
Right, but the items in the cruiser.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, this would be the vehicle.
Just the vehicle.
Just the vehicle. We're just, I'm sorry, we're talking about surplusing the vehicle rather. Normally, we do three reads on the vehicle on any surplus equipment. In this case, because it's not being put out for bid or for anything, or it's for insurance, so you'll still be removing whatever you deem usable first.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So I would just need a vote that that equipment is deemed surplus and that I have the authority to sign over title to the insurance company.
Make a motion to deem the 2019 Dodge Charger Cruiser surplus and authorize Town Administrator Brian Smith the authority to sign over the title to the insurance company.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And next item is an update on the Ford Police Cruiser procurement. So we had an procurement in for current year, model year, we'll say, a 2022 or 2023 Ford Hybrid Interceptor. And you all saw the memo. We had that in order. Ford has canceled all open orders generally that have not been started billed for 2023s. 2022s are off the table already, and we can wait and place an order on 2024, or that was the situation we were in, but they weren't accepting those orders yet. So it was TBD when, and TBD when we'd actually get one, which was, sounded to be likely mid to late '24 or beyond. MHQ, who we placed the order through, had some options for us, which Chief worked with them on. They had a gas Ford Interceptor available on the lot. They had, obviously, we had the option to wait, and then they had a battery electric vehicle or fully electric Mach-E 2023 on the lot available. Chief and I discussed it, and with his recommendation, obviously, we've been, there's a green community looking at more and more things around that direction, and the hybrid SUVs have been, you know, something we've now had two or three of and have been satisfied with. So the decision was made, we only had a very short window to claim it or not because every department in the state is in this position or beyond, right, really, probably across the nation. So after discussing it with Chief and with Chief Wonka as well around safety and just thoughts about a full battery electric, we made the decision that we would move forward with procuring the 2023 Mach-E instead of the, is it a 22?
22.
Okay, I'm sorry, a 2022 Mach-E instead of a 2023 Ford Hybrid that would be unavailable. They offered it to us at the same price, which I don't know, I have not priced a Mach-E to buy, but I think that's a good deal from my understanding of battery electric vehicles. And because it's the first one and we're trying it out, the plan that Chief and I came up with was that the recommendation is for Chief to take that as the admin chief vehicle, where it is not a first-out, you know, patrol cruiser or anything, so we can get an understanding on how does it perform, what is it like when you have a charging, you know, the gas station, you know, all these pieces that this is new, just like the hybrids when we first did them. And his current Ford Hybrid SUV will get converted over to a full patrol vehicle, and that will become the, you know, patrol car, and then the Mach-E will be the admin chief The, at this point, the plan is to leave the paint gray. We won't go the two-tone for now, just to avoid that additional cost down the road. If we don't like the look, we can always repaint it later. And with the Mach-E, should we deem that it just really doesn't fit the department or, you know, it doesn't meet the needs, the resale value will likely more than, you know, make up for any early decision we may need to make if we, you know, beyond our normal lifespan, so. Because they're, they hold value very well right now. So that's the path we went, and so we just wanted to update the board on, that's where we are with that cruiser. So we're actually going to get it soon.
Yeah, I can.
Availability is great, so.
Yep. The, actually, we saved money going this route.
Well.
I think the original was 57 that Brian had signed. This came in at 53.
Great.
And then to outfit our current admin, it's, we had money left over in that account. So we were able to do that without having to use any money from, that was appropriated for the new cruiser, so.
So all total, we've probably saved money, and we can do the changeover, the upfitting, everything we need on both.
Right. Correct.
So you have a time, is there a timeframe associated with this?
Yeah, so I should be able to pick the new cruiser up within, you know, as soon as the insurance company does their thing, they get the title because we have to transfer plates.
Wrong one.
Two-way vehicle transactions.
Yeah, but I can't take the, I can't take the plates off of.
Doors. When can you switch to the Mach-E?
As soon as I know, I still can't take the plates off of my car.
I get it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I get it.
He still has to have the surplus done.
Yeah, I get it, I'm sorry.
Right, so it needs to trickle down.
So, which that process should be very, very quick.
Sorry.
But the, but the Mach-E is available and should be available as soon as they do the paperwork, they get the title signed over. We're talking a week and a half, two weeks, early October.
Did, do we have confirmation from the outfitter that they can at least do radio the minimum for you?
Another outfitter can do the radios.
Okay.
And then we would be sending it back down probably January, February timeframe for just a day and a half, two days for the outfit of the, of the rest of the equipment.
Okay. But it'll be at an administrative level that you're comfortable with?
Yep.
Pretty much out of the gate?
Correct. It would not be used if I was solely on patrol by myself.
I think, you know, Chief and Brian and I talked a little bit about this, you know, we'll have to start thinking about what is, what does a charging policy look like? What does these things look like, you know? How do we potentially use the chargers that are the towns?
Right.
You know, how do we have a charging account that works through those and all those pieces nuanced, you know? Do we need to install a higher-level charger or some sort of charger at the police station? You know, things like that. We can do a basic level two, probably for a reasonable amount of money we have budget for. But if we ever want to get into a, you know, level three or something much, you know, higher, or if this became where we were headed long-term, then that's a.
And Ford may offer something as well.
Yes, I know they, they probably do, so. So that's that one. Now, obviously, we have the issue of now we need another one because of the one we just surplused. So we believe we may have an opportunity. We don't know for sure. There's another department or person group that has a hybrid utility on order that is being built or is arriving. It is not part of the cancellations. There's obviously lots of departments that are looking for it, so we don't know if we'll be able to secure it, but we may. If we are able to secure it, then that could be the replacement for the charger. So it's, it's where we're hoping we'll land, and if not, we'll have to go from there on what we do about the additional vehicle because we're still at the point of not having added one.
And we're, we're not going to get a 2023. They're already canceling. They're going to start taking orders for '24 in probably January, February.
So, yeah.
And everybody's facing, highway's probably facing this, everybody's going to be facing this. They're really recommending to start preparing for cruisers now if you know in a few years you're going to be needing it type thing, so.
So.
It's interesting.
We'll see where we are, but we may be looking at procurements that are two years away in the future, right? In terms of needing to preorder and be ahead instead of, we can probably get one in two months, which is where we've been. So hopefully, that'll come through. It will, if it is, it's also a gray, a little different gray.
I think it's a slightly different gray, but it's still gray, right?
Right. So we would have two gray and two black and gray, and we could go from there down the road if we want to standardize, but that gives us a starting point, so. Anyway, that was long-winded, but that's kind of where we're at on vehicles. It's, it's complex.
We would have been here anyways, even if there wasn't an accident.
Right? Yeah, so, thank you for all the work you've been doing to get us where we are right now, and hopefully, we can continue to have success.
Officer Kimball's actually helped out a lot, too. I mean, he's been a good resource there, so.
I gotta give, I gotta give him some.
Not to get too far afield, can, can we talk about defensive driving training?
We can.
Have, have we looked into that yet?
We actually had that at, at one of our last department head meetings that Brian had held, and we're looking at getting Maya to potentially bring their driving trailer. I know under Chief Blair, we did it, and it was actually a lot of fun. People enjoyed it, and then you're not beating on your own cars.
Driving trailer?
Yeah.
Is it a SIM?
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big arcade game.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like.
So we are, we are, Bill, looking at that.
Okay.
I think it was either Betsy or Brian had sent something for Maya for EVOC training, but it was way out on the, on the Cape, and I just, I couldn't, I couldn't swing that this year to send several officers down. We were still currently down some officers, so.
And EVOC training is the state?
No, this was put on by Maya, but when we go to the academy, we get a whole week's worth of, of EVOC training. That, that's part of our, our basic.
I know the state used to do individual courses throughout, throughout the state, different, different courses that was, was EVOC training. Is that something they're still doing or has it kind of gone by the wayside since COVID?
I've never looked into it, Bill. I know that just with, with EVOC training for even for the Bridge Academy, it was really difficult to get. So, and that was trying to get, you know, male and female officers certified.
Right.
Which was a requirement, EVOC was a requirement, and it was difficult to get them in that class. And that's mandated, so I would imagine anything outside of that is going to be just as difficult or if not harder. I would imagine all the EVOC that the state is putting on is focusing on academy attendees. But we are looking at Maya to offer some stuff. I know the fire department was interested in it and.
Highway. So if we, if we bring it to town, not only would we open it to our neighbors, but we'd make sure that it can be utilized by all the different town departments who have vehicle use, so, so we can have those simulations go.
I just want to ensure that we, that along with doing that, that, that we, that officers involved in accidents review department policy and procedure for blue lighting and moving through congested areas and how to do that properly without having an accident.
I don't disagree. I will say, Mr. Benberry, to the accident, although it was just that it was an accident, Officer Barber did do everything by, by policy and according to his training. It was just a blind spot, so it, it was, it was just that, it was an accident. It wasn't, it wasn't reckless behavior or anything like that, so.
No, no, I clearly understand that, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be misunderstood. It's just that, that as a, as a board, we are required to, to see that, that it doesn't happen again.
I don't want it to happen either, so, yes.
And, and being able to document that we did this and we did that and we put forward this demonstrates in the future that, that we took some action.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, where I worked, there's like a mandatory retraining, like forklift accidents or things like that where we have equipment, so.
Yeah, I had to do that.
That's kind of what you're getting at, like kind of, maybe it's not in a policy, maybe it should be at some point that there's an automatic retraining. Not that, not that it wasn't an accident, but that, let's just back to basics, right?
Understand. Yep.
And just to be clear for everyone, anyone viewing, it was truly just an accident, and to reiterate what Chief said, the officer was following all of the training and, and everything as, as he should have, so.
Yep.
They do happen to all of us unfortunately once in a while.
Yep. I've been in my fair share.
I've had a few.
Never an Irving.
So have I. I unfortunately can't always say that I was doing everything I should have or thinking about everything I should have, but I'm glad you was, and they were all okay. Any questions on vehicles? I know that was a lot in-depth there, but just wanted to update everybody and appreciate Chief and Officer Gordon's work on it.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for us, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Review a letter of interest and appointment to the cultural council. We have a letter of interest from.
Two people.
John Fliss and Liz Donaldson or Liz?
It's Donaldson.
Yes. Elizabeth Donald.
Correct.
You're talking about.
Is it Liz Fliss, though?
They're in the process of that, but.
Okay, so anyway, and it's Donald, not Donaldson, right? I knew you had Donaldson in there, so I was, wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the agenda was a typo.
Apologies, okay, so. Any, we have two openings, so.
No concerns. Happy to see people volunteering and not a lot to discuss on that.
And I'm excited new business owners in town are interested in joining us, too.
Want to be involved, so.
So joining, you know, kind of having a voice and being part of it.
Yep, so without belaboring that anymore, I'm just going to jump right in and make a motion to appoint.
Don't make with our names.
Jonathan Fliss is a member of the cultural council with a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second one is I will make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Donald as a member of the cultural council with a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And continuing this positive trend of interest, review of letter of interest and appointment to the conservation commission, our very own tax collector, Michelle Turner.
Yes.
We have a vacancy?
Correct.
Any concerns?
I have no concerns.
Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Michelle Turner as a member of the conservation commission with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you to all three of them for volunteering to join those commissions.
Yes. Unfortunately, there's still lots of openings, or fortunately, if anyone's interested, so we've got, we've got plenty.
On that shameless plug, on that note, there was an updated listing in the Around Town for all of the appointed positions and the elected officials that we have openings for, which is where we're starting to get our letters of interest.
Okay.
We have five elected official positions open, and we have a request for letters of interest by next Wednesday. So anybody who's watching who's a registered Irving voter, please consider submitting your letter of interest to those boards and commissions, and we will be updating our appointed official And we will be updating our appointed official list after you've made these appointments and putting that into the October around town. So, so we will keep advertising these around town, opportunities in the around town.
Excellent. Issuance of cemetery deeds, 571 through 573.
Make a motion, we issued deed number 571, lot number 1260 to Fred McGuire of four Pratt Street in Irving.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there are three of them, so make a motion to issue deed number 572, lot number 1261 to deed owner number one, Mike Pierce of four Pratt Street, and deed owner number two, Kathy Pierce for Pratt Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, make a motion to issue deed number 573, lot number 1263 to Sheena McGuire of four Pratt Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review and approval of professional engineering proposal for wastewater asset management project from Time Bond. We'll buy Time Bond. So this was the asset management plan and inventory project that was acquired by DUP. We had grant from them.
Eighty-five.
For eighty-five-five, yep. And the, we appropriated matching funds of $33,400 at the annual town meeting. The remaining cost was $23,600, which will be in count, yeah, in kind work from the town and personal staff as opposed to money. So this is professional engineering services contract from Time Bond for the project in the amount of $118,900. The remaining funds are for.
I believe reimbursables for other miscellaneous.
PNE as is, subs, whatever. Okay, correct. It's the kind of contingency money for other things we have to do to support it.
To finish the project, correct.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
No, I went through the tasks. It seems pretty straightforward.
No concern?
The only thing I'll just note that this is determined order is a requirement by Mass DUP.
Right.
And there were some additional requirements in our NEPTES permits that were issued most recently. And so I've just asked Time Bond to go back through and anything that was required as a deliverable related to our asset management plan and inventory and the NEPTES permits has to be addressed by us, too. So it's not just satisfying Mass DUP's requirements. I want to make sure that anything that was in the NEPTES permits, the two things, even though they're two different agencies, they align. They're very similar. So I want to just make sure we've, we've covered everything. I don't want to come back and say, and now we have to do another project. So that is being addressed as well.
Okay.
I assume we don't anticipate that significant or a change in scope or, or a change in cost. Maybe it's slight change in scope.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Any anything else on it?
I have nothing, sir.
No?
Okay.
You want a motion on it?
Uh, yes, please.
Make a motion to engage Time Bond for professional engineering services to conduct an asset management plan and inventory project of the Irving wastewater collection and treatment facilities in accordance with the proposed schedule for a total cost of $118,900 and to authorize Brian Smith to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a secondary motion here. Make a motion for the town of Irving to file all necessary agreements with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust to proceed with the asset management planning grant program and to authorize Brian Smith to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll get those going tomorrow.
Excellent. Careful checking me. I didn't skip anything tonight.
I didn't know if you had a chance to read August 22nd minutes.
I did not.
Okay.
But if both of you have.
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you.
I did. I mean, if you want to.
Sure.
You can either.
Meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2022.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of eight twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two as written?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more thing off the list.
I, yeah. If you've both read them.
Yeah, there was no issues.
I'm comfortable. I just said not, so all good. Okay, the next meeting is 26th. We'll probably be coming back to talk about the textile ban.
Yes.
Yes.
Because that's coming up. So we've got to address what are we doing, if anything, or what information at least are we getting out to the residents?
Right. We tangent to that in terms of disposal. Before, did you all just FYI the letter from McNamara? There's a potential for if the railroad strike does happen, there's a potential impact to our disposal company's ability to accept our waste. So I will continue to monitor that situation with our vendors and make you all aware if we have a problem, if, if something arises over the next few weeks. But I should know soon.
I believe the significance of that potential concern is raised up at the federal level because of, because of the impact nationwide, right? So it's pretty significant.
Correct.
I don't know what else we would do because they probably all depend on it, but.
Yeah.
It's a little scary. We don't have to cross that bridge. And we will have the contracts for the wheel loader lease.
I should be able to have that.
Because that's been held contingent, unfunded and approved. So.
Yep.
It's, it's, it exists. We have it. It's.
Yeah.
We don't have it, but it's waiting for us.
Yeah, waiting for a contract.
Right. It's waiting for funding was approved and we're ready. And so we got that, so we're good to go.
Yep.
And Glenn, I think the highway truck is all in progress as well.
We got the call today that it is finally ready. They've asked us to wait just a few more days because they would like to show it off at an equipment show next week. Because it's a beautiful truck.
I was going to say, they're that proud of it, huh?
They're very excited about it. So Glenn said that that would be fine as long as we have a big sold sticker in it.
Yeah.
Town of Irving label on the door.
There's no higher bidder coming in and buying that one from us, so.
If you all don't mind, a few more days, but it's coming next week.
It's all good. It's all good. Equipment's starting to come in. It's exciting because, yeah, it's a tough market.
It's almost impossible to get the equipment, but slowly, the, the tractor you all bought for sidewalk clearing is finally arriving tomorrow. I mean, these are all things that we ordered back in June and we're just starting to get them. So yes, they are arriving.
Exciting. It's good. Anything else for next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Not that I'm worried.
All right. Motion to adjourn at nine thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.